Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order.
Mr. Dangler?
Here.
Mr. Viero will be absent this evening. Dr. Vogt?
Here.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Here.
I hereby certify that this meeting has been published in the newspaper in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and posted as required by law.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask Gerald Frida to please come forward.
Good evening, everybody. So I've been asked to come and give you an update on North Fifth Avenue, which is a project that had started as part of our 2017 road program.
Jerry, if you may, I think if you can move that microphone.
And first thing I can report to you is that the water company and the gas company are now complete with the first phases of their relocation. It was quite difficult of a time to coordinate both utilities with our contractor, and it took quite a bit more time than we had expected or had hoped. But they are now complete with the first phase of their work. The problem we have, as you may know, is during the design phase, we have to rely on site work and as-built information. So when we get into construction, many times, especially in the older parts of the city, where the utilities are older and have been in place a long time, the records aren't up to date. And it took quite a bit of time to find everything before we could actually get approval to relocate everything. But we are getting closer. There's a schedule, I'm not sure if it was provided to everyone, but by the end of next week, we are supposed to be complete. The rain this past couple of days has set the contractor back a little bit from his schedule, but he's confident that unless he gets more rain, he can still meet the schedule and be done by the end of next week with the work in that area. One thing that you guys should know is that there's a second phase to the work there. Because the plan is to take that water, because stormwater has nowhere to go in that neighborhood. And there used to be the, when the right-of-way came through, it created a big mound in the road, and it caused havoc for the residents. That mound will be removed, storm sewer will be put in, and we're going to run a surcharge system from North Fifth down to Rockwell. And Rockwell is part of the 2018 road program, so that work will be finished up under that program. And it gives the, both utility companies, time to move the rest of their stuff out of our way. So they'll be out of our way long before our contractor starts. And that's the update as of today. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
So Jerry, when you say hopefully the work will be completed by next week, that means the road will be open, but you're not talking about the curbing and all that as well, or are you?
Well, I'm hopeful that it will include the curbing and the sidewalk, and the paving would soon follow. So yes, we could be done.
What is, when Councilman Wittes and Vogt walked around with me on Thursday afternoon, I know that there was the, I think it was 74 Mr. Ritzold's property there. I mean, there's a, you know, a large distance between what was the old street level and now that's all chopped up. How was, how was, he was wondering how that's going to be corrected.
They're going to come back and grade back into the properties to make them a more gentle slope. When the job's done, that whole neighborhood will have a whole new look to it, much like the rest of the streets in town where everyone's front yard, you can walk from yard to yard to yard, you're not going up that hill and then back down the other side again. Water won't be trapped and stuck and ponding and flooding that occurs basically on the south side of that, because the water had nowhere to go previously. So we're going to get it all, and when we follow up with the second phase of work, we'll get it into surcharge pipes, run it down that right-of-way towards Rockwell. And then when the Rockwell work gets done, similarly, we'll have the same type of work on Rockwell that's being done on North Fifth, but it won't be quite as disruptive. North Fifth is a bad side.
So you're hopeful that by the end of next week, even that graded slope will be completed?
Well, we're hoping that, yes, as close as possible.
Okay.
But if you see now, we tried to keep it so that the pedestrians could get by. Everyone's been cooperative. It's been frustrating for everyone, including us, including our contractor, including the utility companies. Everyone is, you know, tried to do their best. It's just the process to get this completed, and the constant need for everyone else's approval before the next person could work caused the delays that we're facing.
Was there a reason why the water company wasn't there for two weeks, because we were informed of that?
I can't really speak for the water company. I only know that they were in coordinating with pricing from their contractor, and I don't know how long it takes for them internally to have that all approved, but my understanding is that that was part of their delay.
Are they going to be able to, going in and out of their driveways now, once this, like after next week is completed?
We're hopeful that by the end of next week, yes, they'll have access to the driveways, you'll be able to drive the roadway. There may be a small little hump temporarily over top of one of the gas mains.
Okay.
Because that gas, they have to come back and lower that gas main.
Is that where they had the leak?
Yes.
Okay. And that's not dangerous to any?
No, it's not dangerous to anyone. And our contractor is prepared to put a steel plate over top of that main and backfill and complete his work. And then later, the gas company will come back and move that out, and then they'll pave the road, and it'll be done.
Thank you.
Jerry, we sent out a little update, I guess, on Monday, just because there was a lot of concern when we were walking around that the residents just didn't know exactly what was going on day to day, so I was wondering if there's any change to the schedule, or if perhaps you could maybe in the next week, before it's completed, maybe send out another update or two, or if it's difficult for you to let us know and we could maybe do it?
We'll certainly let, through the administrator's office, let you know what's going on, but as of this moment, there's still a good chance it can be done per the original schedule. Hopefully, we don't have any more rainy days between now and then, but we're hopeful we can get that done.
We can meet with the contractor Monday or Tuesday and just check and see if that's scheduled.
He has other work in town, so he's here. So, you know, we have him as a captive audience, and he can get back and forth whenever we need him to.
You know, I would just stress the importance of that communication, because not only was it an unfortunate situation all the way around, and like you say, the people were amazing-
They were.
-in terms of their patience, but it was also, I'm going to speak for the three of us, the mayor and Councilman Wittes and myself, that went, we were so surprised with what we saw. We had no idea. And it was an embarrassing, you know, situation all the way around, so that, I just want to stress that communication, the importance of that communication, so everybody is informed and nobody's kind of caught off guard like that.
Well, I can assure you, everything we do, we keep, through the administrator, we keep you informed.
Yeah.
And this is, you have to understand, this was not your typical project site.
Mm-hmm.
The layers of responsibility. The gas company has its whole chain of operate, on how that all has to take place. The water company has theirs. And you're talking about some very old facilities, and no one really knew what was what. So, of course, I apologize for any inconvenience. We have done the same to the residents. They've been wonderful through this whole thing, and I just want you to know, we're doing everything within our power on your behalf to move the contractors along and move utility companies' contractors along. We've spent countless hours out there.
Yeah, I can imagine. Let me ask just-
We'll continue to do that.
Let me just ask just one other question, I may have missed it. That, the fear that the water was contaminated, I don't know if you've touched that, I'm sorry.
I did hear that someone was concerned about a smell or an odor.
Yeah.
But no, the water's not contaminated. One of the issues we did have, I'll let you know this, the water company, when they first ran their bacteria test, it didn't come up to snuff. So that, they had to run a second test, set a test. And a lot of times, that only happens because when you have new pipe going in the ground, the pipe's not sterile, so it has to be flushed through.
Okay.
Everything is fine, everything is safe. The water company would not let us proceed if it wasn't.
So if the residents were to ask us for documentation, we could produce documentation?
The water company should be able to provide that to them. You know, they are responsible to their customers, just as we are responsible to our residents. Yes.
Okay.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, good night, Jerry.
And next, I'd like to invite Mr. Kevin Hayes and Mr. Rob Goodman to please come forward. We're going to discuss safe routes to school.
Rob is going to pass out to you a handout. It's essentially two maps of two locations. What we're looking for from council is consensus to proceed to make an application, actually to provide a resolution at the next meeting for your approval, for us to proceed with a application under the Transportation Trust Fund Act for a Safe Routes to School program. And the top map shows John Street where it meets, from Hendrickson Avenue was on top, and then the two yellow lines lead on John Street to the Anastasia School. There's currently no sidewalks in that area, and the heavy yellow line shows what the limits of the project are on the, for that project, for the John Street project. And then the second page shows Prospect Division and Exchange Place around the Holy Trinity School. So we're looking for your consensus to allow us to make the application for funding to do this project.
Kevin, is this a, is this a matching grant, or is this fully funded, or?
So it's a TTF grant, it would be fully funded, including inspection cost on the back end?
The design costs and the soft costs on the front end, we would absorb. The engineering for the design application would be borne by the city, as is the case for all the TTF projects.
Rob, what's the timeline for knowing if we've been awarded this?
The good news is the TTF cycle is back in regular cycle because of the shutdown in the prior administration, it had been off-cycle, and we were getting some weird notifications, like in the middle of February for stuff the year before. I suspect that we'll probably know before Thanksgiving or shortly thereafter.
And I apologize, I believe the resolution is on for tonight for your consideration, I apologize.
So I'm not familiar, I read what was in the packet, but I'm not familiar with all the details. Could you just do an overview of, like, the actual work that would be done, and what it's going to look like when it's all finished, like?
Sure. These are principally, for both neighborhoods, sidewalk improvements, and the mission of safe routes to school is to ensure that all pedestrian and bicycle ways to schools are safe and secure. What we've noticed about these two neighborhoods is, the business administrator noted around Amerco Anastasia School, it's quite, quite truthfully, it's somewhat shameful that we have not had walks on a street where we have cars going through there for pickup and drop-off every day for, you know, since the new Anastasia School was built. And, you know, for the business administrator, I keep pestering that, you know, can we apply for this time? And there is always a brighter, you know, brighter burning fire. The great news is that the new SRTS program, Safe Routes to School program, this year is allowing you to apply for multiple projects on the same application. So we're taking that opportunity to look at these two areas where we have, either we have no walks, we have no connectors, or we just have aging infrastructure where there's just a lot of cracks in the walks, and they just need to be upgraded. In terms of the finished product, essentially what you're getting is new curbing, any repair to the street that's necessary to support that curbing, as well as brand-new walks.
So Anita, just to add to that, like, my son was in the Anastasia School for two years, so I would often, you know, pick him up and so forth. And, you know, there's kids literally in the street, in the street there, and the buses and the cars would pick up and drop off. And then at the, on the Prospect Street, you have the same situation where I think the school, our school system rents-
Right, it's called the Morris Avenue School Annex.
Right.
Correct.
Which is the old Holy Trinity church.
Correct.
School there. And those, the condition of that sidewalk is in pretty bad shape, and I think you have kids who are departing and getting on the bus there as well, which is-
Right, the cohort that actually attends that school, I believe, and I think you would confirm, is, I believe they're the three to four-year-olds in that annex. So it's very critical that, you know, we have a good, safe area for walking, as well as pickup and drop-off.
What do you think are our chances of getting funded?
So, they're certainly better now that TTF is fully funded. The state has been reasonable with us in terms of the award amounts, in terms of local aid, municipal aid, and we have had previous grant applications that were unawarded. We're hopeful this round that we'll see some results, at least from one of the projects.
Good. And it's only in the yellow where they're going to do the replacements?
Yes.
No further?
Yeah.
Yellow and the kids, the new sidewalk.
Anyone else?
What will the design costs be for the city?
I believe the design cost that we had gotten quoted from one engineering firm, one was for 13.5, and I believe another one is 11.8.
That's right around that, yeah.
Yeah.
That's the rough number right now. That's design and construction and management inspections.
Thank you.
If I just could make a recommendation, in the past, I'm not sure if the resolution should be on this evening, I don't-
It's on.
We normally, we normally don't name the resolution until we have actually filed the application within the state's electronic grant filing system, and then it's assigned an application number. And I believe the sample resolution that I sent over probably just doesn't have that designation. If you wish to remove it and wait until we do the formal submission, that might be better, because then we'll have to submit the resolution, because what happens when it goes to the engineering office, they're going to match that up with what's in the electronic system as well. So I'm sorry, and I, you know, when we talked earlier today, you didn't believe that it was on, and I should have checked.
Yeah.
I apologize.
We had, we had sent it last week to the clerk to put on.
Okay, understood.
Do you need it removed, or you're asking for us to remove it, is that?
I would recommend it.
Okay.
But just be prepared for the next submission, once we, you know, have the engineer onboard to support the work and formally do, you know, start the filing process, and we'll have a formal application number.
Okay, thank you.
It's the right way to do it.
So you're saying it'll be faster to pull it now and redo it correctly?
We're just going to redo work, that's all. That's, that's the problem, I just want to make sure we don't have to redo it.
It's 161 is the resolution. I guess you would ask that you remove it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we're going to discuss abandoned properties.
The mayor's asked that we, that I begin the dialogue with council concerning the number of tools that are available to municipalities to deal with abandoned properties. The first thing that we should understand is that there are different categories of properties that are all kind of under that umbrella. We're really dealing with properties that are vacant properties, properties that are bank, either foreclosed in some, in some stage of foreclosure or bank-owned, and properties that we would deem truly abandoned, meaning properties in which we, the owner is no longer responsive to us or no longer around in the area, or there might be a dispute as to the ownership, sometimes what'll happen is that the person who owns the property will, will die, or, and there'll be no heirs, or there'll be heirs that are out of state and they're truly are not, not involved in the property. The, the process for dealing, dealing with these various different issues all start with the, with the same, the same steps, and that is, you have to put together a comprehensive list, and you have to understand what neighborhoods these properties are in. There are, there are groups out there that I've dealt with in Burlington and in Rawa and in other places, who literally put together, put apps together for inspectors so that they can begin to understand neighborhoods that are kind of at-risk neighborhoods, and they have a, literally an algorithm in which they can, you know, if they determine that there are X number of properties on a street in a proximity, they can, they can direct code enforcement officials to go in and to begin dealing with each of those various different properties. Obviously, you might have a bank-owned property, so there might be an actual owner of the property that you can get to for things like property maintenance, but it may be vacant, and you may need to engage the bank or, or whoever the individual is who has foreclosed and taken the property. Those are, those are much more traditional negotiations. You try to, you know, either, you know, find what avenues there are in place to get them to sell the property, to get it back onto the, onto the rolls, so that it has somebody who's occupying it and maintaining it. You know, there are also cities who have worked in all of these areas to literally do it, almost like mini redevelopments, like scattered site redevelopments, try to put together two or three properties, go out for RFPs, to try to get people to come in to develop and, and to restore them. The more problematic properties are always the properties that are, that are abandoned or foreclosed, and there's nobody taking care of them. The abandoned properties, and that's sometimes the smaller, the smaller group of properties, because there's just nobody who's taking responsibility, you create abandoned property lists, and the law actually has a, what's called a toolkit, to allow you to go in, for instance, to condemn those properties, to buy them, to sell them to people who are going to fix them, or to fix them up and to, and then put them back on, back out on the market. And the law has a very, a very defined process for doing that. It establishes how it is that you value the properties, it talks about what happens to the money and, because typically you don't have people who are around to, to get it, so where it gets deposited. But the important part about it is that it, it gives you the ability to not just have to sit back and have code enforcement, because what happens with these properties, especially the abandoned properties, is you can send summons after summons, but it's really not going anywhere, because there's nobody there. So that, so that's the first thing, and that's, the abandoned properties are really, you know, code enforcement telling us about those. The second is vacant properties. So you have properties that just, they may have owners, but they're vacant and they're not being maintained. The, that tool to gather the information is a vacant properties registry, so requiring people who have vacant, either commercial or residential properties, to register, there's, you know, there's, there's fees that, most of the towns that I've seen have fees that escalate over, over the years, but it creates a pool of money, the registration fees, to allow you to now go in and start to deal with, to deal with those properties, to find out why the properties are vacant, what, what the issues are, and once again, if necessary, to kind of force the development of it. It also gives you the ability, once you know that they're vacant properties, to find out whether or not there's utilities that are connected to it, whether or not there's, you know, you have problems with, especially with vacant properties, with them being occupied by people who don't own them, and, and that becomes an issue. They also, you know, the whole point of all of this is it's kind of, in New York City in the old days, they used to call it the kind of the broken window syndrome, which is that if you have, if you have a house on the street and it's got broken windows, it starts to drag down the entire neighborhood, and then it becomes almost like a, kind of like a cancer in the neighborhood, it takes one, and then it drags down. So the purpose of it is to try to establish a mechanism that allows your code enforcement people to identify and then go in and start to take proactive measures. So I indicated to the mayor that I would, you know, over the course of the next few weeks, start to bring to council examples of these ordinances, and we can start to take a look at them and start to adopt them, but, you know, working with Kevin and the code enforcement folks, you know, it just, just gives them more tools to be able to, to turn these neighborhoods around, and that's the important part of it. Kevin, I don't know if you have anything?
No, no, well, as we, as you come up with samples, I'll be happy to review them and give my input to them.
Any questions?
No.
Mayor, questions?
Is there a list that's been started, or?
Kevin, do you have a list of abandoned or bank-owned properties, or?
We, the only list that we would, or not actually a list, is we would have, I know Congress here would have, under the current state law, where banks that have begun to initiate the foreclosure process-
Right.
...are required to notify the town.
Correct.
So we have, you know, letters from them. So I think we have some grouping of it, we haven't data-based them actually yet, but it's not something that we, would be too tough for us to do.
Correct.
Vogt, is there any time estimate that you could put on this? I mean, I know we're going to be investigating it and moving along.
We can do, we can do the ordinances relatively quickly. I mean, we could certainly, over the course of the next 30 days, get these ordinances and get them out and get them on the books.
Okay.
And it starts, I mean, you know, they, these are, we're, you're not breaking new ground here, most, most of the cities have these, many of the suburban communities have them also. They tend to deal with more foreclosed properties than abandoned properties, but you can certainly, you know, do it relatively quickly, so that by, you know, the end of the summer, you'll have these in place, and you can begin the process of inventorying them and getting, you know, getting properties registered and creating lists, and then starting to deal with them.
Great. I just, you know, think it's good that with all these, all these projects that we talk about and that we have in front of us, you know, to have some sense of what the timeline is that we're shooting for, so we stay, create some sense of urgency with everything, so thank you.
How resistant are the banks, or how cooperative are the banks with these foreclosed properties?
The banks, well, with the foreclosed properties, the banks don't want to own the properties. They really don't. They want to get them and get them, you know, if you can start pairing banks with people who are interested in buying properties and getting, that's really what they want to do, because they don't have any interest in, they, it's cumbersome for them to maintain them. That having been said, all banks are different. I mean, there's some banks are very proactive with regards to it. I have found that the larger banks, you know, 10 properties owned by Wells Fargo, not the, not the, 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 Wells Fargo, but a big bank like a Wells Fargo, whose headquarters is in, you know, North Carolina, there, you're just, you're just five of, you know, 50,000 properties that they have, and, and they have one person in the state who's here to maintain it, and it, so, so they're, they tend to be less responsive, it's hard, but you have to keep after them. And, you know, once you get this program up, you have to have somebody who is really dedicated to, once you have all of this information, to going in and finding out, because each one of these properties has a different issue as to why it is that, you know, they are what they are. But the other thing, and I know that, I'm just getting into some of your affordable housing things, there are also funding sources that you can use to, to turn some of these into affordable, affordable units, and that's a, that's a really good reuse of them also.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. And next, we're going to discuss Shop Long Branch?
Shop Long Branch. You have in your packet tonight an ordinance for introduction, and I've also provided you with a program description, the administrative, kind of proposed administrative regulations, and an application form, so that you see kind of from soup to nuts what, what it will take to put the, the program in place. You had a presentation as to kind of how it works. This is just the nuts and bolts of it. This is the, kind of the original format as to how this was done, and in my opinion, the best way to do it is to do it as a, as an ordinance, that essentially you're permitting these programs, and the only, one of the reasons that I did it that way is because it really is run by a private entity, and so I didn't, didn't think it was appropriate to go through a RFP process and award a contract, because then it really becomes a city's program, and unless you're going to actually administer it, you really should keep that, that separation between the city and, and the person who's running the program. But in the end, what, what it does is that it allows for somebody to go out and, and establish the program that, that you heard about at, at your last meeting. It, it gives you the administrative flexibility to be able to, however it is that Mike, Mike Martin decides that he needs to get the information so that he can apply it to people's tax bills, it sets up some regularity for it. So it's, I think that it's a pretty good program description of it, and that, so this is just, you know, moving forward with- is just, you know, moving forward with the program that was outlined for you.
Thank you. And now, the next time would be reports from city council, any updates from, that you'd like to share?
Can we talk about the Hundred Day Plan, update on that? Just what, what's happening, not the specifics of it?
Sure.
So we made a lot of progress this week with the, with our Hundred Day Plan. It was finalized on Sunday in a, in a meeting that we had, and then on Monday, we, because today is Wednesday, was, on Monday and Tuesday, we posted the Hundred Day Plan on the website. So if anybody wants to see it, just go to the homepage on, on the website. And we also sent out a press release about it. So on Tuesday, I was here just for some other reasons, just the other business that I needed to get done, and it was very encouraging to hear, you know, different people in, in city hall saying, "Oh, wow, did you see, did you read the Hundred Day Plan? Did you see where you are in the Hundred Day Plan?" And, you know, how everyone can kind of participate in making this plan really, you know, come to fruition. So it was exciting to hear people buy into that. And a little bit later on, we'll be playing, we'll be setting the date, Rose, for our first town meeting, at which it'll be discussed, and we'll actually put it into, into action. So that, that was exciting.
Thank you.
Yes, I went to part of the planning board meeting where the Long Branch Partners presented their plan that was approved by the prior administration. The design and everything did look nice. I asked a couple of questions, I guess prematurely. One of them was, how will the influx of the five hundred-plus units affect the school system in regards to, you know, the number of children that will be coming in, coming into the school, on the taxpayers? That, that was why I asked the question, because that would mean the school district would obviously have to possibly hire more teachers with, with a large number of students coming, but I didn't get that answer just at that time. And also, my other question, even though, again, it was approved, was why do we need a fourth supermarket in Long Branch? We obviously have the, the one on Broadway, we have Fine Fair and Stop and Shop, and my response was it was more of a specialty type of grocery store or shopping, so that people from the beach could possibly come, or people that would be living there without also be able to use it. Again, it's not much that I could say, other than I still don't understand why we need another grocery store in a town this small. And that, that was, that was it, but I would like to add, if this is the right place, Mayor, financially, I don't know if we're satisfied that Long Branch Partners has the money to pull this project off. So that is my concern, and I would like possibly our attorney to, to reach out and to get some type of, I guess guarantee, for lack of a better adjective, that they do have the money to pull this off. We don't want, you know, two or three years from now for us to still be saying, "It's on the way." And that's for citizens of Long Branch, that's not a political statement, it's just the people in Long Branch wanna see some movement. So we've given the property away, we approved the plan, but again, I'm not satisfied that we know that they have the money to pull the project off. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Jane?
Yeah, I had a discussion with the senior center director, and she told me that the county gave the city of Long Branch sixty-five hundred dollars in addition. So what she plans to do with that money, you will see a new sign go up at the senior center, when I don't know, and then she has additional programs that she's going to put in place. One of them might be a spinning, I don't know if you know what that is, but a lot of people do. It's spinning, and it costs quite a bit of money for the bikes. So she's very happy for the additional funds. That's it.
Thank you. I went to the environmental commission meeting, and they're going to speak before us at the next workshop and discuss, you know, the possibility of those once-used plastic bags that end up into the ocean and eventually into our food, and maybe, you know, trying to, you know, looking to abandon the use of those here in Long Branch, so they'd like to discuss that with us. And they're also doing a tree survey, and so they'll be, they're, I've invited them to come, well, they asked us to come to update us on what they're doing, and, you know, so we can continue to be environmentally responsible and, you know, continue the green initiative here in Long Branch. So that was very, I enjoyed being there, and so you'll be hearing more from them in two weeks. John, do you have anything to add?
Well, I just wanted to thank council president Wittes. It was her idea to do this sort of council update, which I think is a good idea, which basically, Rose, if you wanna explain it, or just the idea of, you know, we're all sort of get involved and go to dirt, go ahead.
Yeah, well, we all, we're all going into different directions, and we thought it would be a good idea if someone went to a meeting to, you know, update one another and the community as to what's going on, and, you know, just to continue to be informative and stay abreast of as much as we can, because we can't all be at the same place at one time, so. Thank you, John.
Sure. And I'd also like to add, we have a new suggestion box in the back of the room there with some forms. So, you know, we find that sometimes people don't like to come, come up and, and speak, so if you don't, but you have an idea or a comment, please fill out the form, put it in there, and we're in the process of working how, how we'll address that, but obviously we'll get back to anyone who, who has a comment or suggestion. And thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I need a motion to close this portion of the meeting?
Before we close, I have a question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, in regards to the bill list, I know it's on the resolution, but I do have a couple of questions. Should I ask them here at the workshop or the public portion?
Yeah, it's a review of the regular agenda, so it would be on the workshop.
Okay.
Certainly can I ask them here, councilman?
Okay, not a problem. There's a couple of different items, but reimbursement of the clearing, clearing account, not sure what that is, and then a part of the section is about four entries that equal about two million dollars, or two-point-one million dollars. What is, what is that for?
The clearing account is where we actually pay all our checks out of. I guess it's similar to like a warrant account with the board of bed. All the different funds deposited to the clearing account, so we only have one checking account that actually has checks paid out.
Okay. Thank you. Ammunition. How often do we, do we purchase ammunition? Because we have, I don't know if this is for the month, but twenty, twenty-three thousand dollars in ammunition?
Generally, once twice a year. I think ammunition deposits are twenty, forty-seven thousand, I believe. So it's probably half a year is what we buy at a time. We have to travel pretty far actually to go and get it, so we try to do it with one or two big trips per year.
And this one is, well, one more, two more actually. Computer maintenance for police and fire. Forty-nine thousand dollars for computer maintenance? That's for...
That's the software maintenance for spillment.
For both, for both police and fire department. For both police and fire department.
So that's the maintenance, be our computer dispatch system for both the police and fire department, it's run and hosted through the county, as is for probably thirty other towns, and they acquire a yearly maintenance fee.
Oh, this is for the year? Okay. And this, this last one is simple. Reimbursement to replace damaged jeans. It's only forty-nine dollars, so it's not the issue, but don't we have a clothing allowance for...
Damaged what?
Damaged jeans, it says. Who's it going to?
We, they don't get a allowance anymore, and it's in the PDA contract, anything that's damaged in the course of their duties, the city will, the city will replace.
Okay. But we don't have a, you don't have a clothing allowance anymore?
You don't have allowance anymore.
Okay.
That was taken out of our, or actually rolled into our contract, I wanna say ten years ago, maybe, like, somewhere around about ten years.
But this is for a non-uniformed officer, detective, councilman.
Well, I, yes, I figured, figured that would be the case, but, okay, but if it's in the contract, then it's not...
Pursued to the contract, yeah.
In the contract, yeah.
If it's in the contract, then it's nothing.
In the contract, so anything that's damaged or ruined or torn, you know, in the form of the, uh, duties, the city will...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to have a motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close?